Ladies and gentlemen, we are live. Welcome to the April 27th, 2020 Dublin City Council meeting. I will now call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to this virtual Dublin City Council meeting. We are living in an extraordinary time. Both the state of Ohio and the city of Dublin have declared states of emergency. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to have virtual meetings. We appreciate the ability to maintain our continuity of government. For the duration of the stay-at-home order, we will be holding council meetings online and live streaming those meetings on YouTube. You can access the live stream on the city's website. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form underneath the streaming video on the city's website. These questions and comments will be relayed to us by our Director of Communications and Public Information. We want to encourage and hope to accommodate public participation and comment to the greatest extent possible. We welcome your comments on public business, but please refrain from inappropriate comments. This certainly is a less-than-perfect system, but we will be doing our absolute best in these difficult times and certainly appreciate your patience in the midst of that. Now, I would ask Ann to please call the roll.
Mayor Amaro Scrums?
Here.
Dr. Kena, sorry, Mr. Keeler.
Here.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Here.
Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Reiner?
Here.
Your Peterson?
Here.
Ludo?
Here.
Very good. And again, I have asked Homer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So he will be getting the flag up for us and he will be leading us in the pledge. If you would, please mute your microphones so that we can hear the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, Homer. We do not have any special recognitions or presentations this evening in an effort to try to keep our meetings as simple as possible. We will be holding those until we're all back together again. Now would be the time to ask for citizen comments. Ann, have we received any citizen comments virtually? Sorry, Ann, your microphone is muted. If you could unmute, please.
Sorry, I've not received anything via our email system. I think Sue may have received something.
Very good. Sue, do you have something for us from the web?
Yes, we did receive a comment from Marty Majka, who lives at 6065 Heather Bluff Drive in Dublin, 43016. And her subject is high school senior athletic recognition. As a member of the Kaufman PTO, I am asking for all high schools, how can we recognize our senior athletes who have missed their spring season? My solution suggestion is to have banners paid for by parents to be displayed downtown Dublin. This would include assistance from Sciota, Kaufman, and Jerome for their senior athletes. We would not do unless all schools are on board. Please drive through Marysville Hilliard and Pickerington and you will be able to view this show of support. All of these student athletes are down and this would certainly raise their spirits. Remember, majority of these kids will never pick up a baseball, a softball, volleyball, a tennis ball, or even run around a track again. We must support these young men and women. These banners will have to be installed by the Streets Division, which is where your support and permission comes in. Please consider this proposal and allow all our three schools to create smiles for our young student athletes. Thank you for your consideration.
Good. Thank you, Sue. We did see that, something similar to that come through our contact city council webpage. And I do know that Dana had chimed in on that. So I, Dana, you want to give us an update? I know that you were working with the schools and there was some communication. You want to give us an update on that?
Sure. Good evening, members of council. We did give this some thought. Actually, it's been well over a week ago Sue and I started to discuss the idea of how the city might participate with the schools to recognize graduates, be they high school graduates or college graduates or otherwise here in the city, because certainly our high school graduates aren't going to quite get to experience that opportunity for graduation, nor will some of our college grads and post-graduates grads here in town. So we had started a discussion about what we might be able to do and asked Sue to talk to the schools about that. She has been in conversation with the schools. Our focus has been more about graduates in general, not specific groups within graduating classes, be they athletes or academics or musical or what have you. It was really about graduates in general. Sue, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
Thank you, Dana. Mayor and council, that is correct. I've been in conversation with Dublin City Schools, with Doug Baker. We actually have another meeting tomorrow. We have brainstormed some ideas that we're looking into right now. Actually, one of them is using our pages in Dublin Life. That would be for the June-July issue that will come out the end of May, early June, to really feature and recognize the class of 2020. And then Doug and I are looking at other ways in which we can work together, whether it's videos or whether it's some other kind of recognition. So we'll keep you posted on what those are and just be assured that we are working together on doing that.
Great, thank you. Certainly is a really, it's a difficult time for all and it's particularly difficult for those graduating from college, from high school, from whatever. And I know, you know, the spring plays got canceled and all of those kids that have worked so hard at all of their levels of interest. Incredibly disappointed. I have a niece who's a senior, so I completely understand. So Marty, we hope to keep in contact with you. Sue has your information. And we will be forwarding what comes of those meetings with Dr. Hodley and be communicating with you. So thank you for that and we will certainly keep in communication. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Items proposed for the consent agenda will be a single motion. Ann, have we received any comments to the clerk's office regarding the consent agenda?
We have not received any.
Very good. Thank you. And Sue, likewise?
No, nothing.
Okay, is there any desire from any member of council to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Christina. Ann, would you please call the roll?
Sorry, Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Peterson? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrums?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Okay, we have a postponed item ordinance 06-20.
This is rezoning approximately 3.47 acres east of Highland Croy Road, south of Mitchell de Wit Road from PUD Planted Development District. This is Oak Park Subarea E to PUD Planted Development District, Oak Park Subarea F for the future development of up to 12 single-family homes and 0.66 acre of open space.
Very good. Thank you. The applicant has requested that this be tabled until we don't have a meeting date. So this will be tabled until future notice. So with that, I will make a motion to table ordinance 06-20. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Christina. Ann, would you please call the roll?
Oh yes. Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrums?
Yes.
Dr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Very good. That will take us to, we do not have any first readings this evening. That will take us to our second reading, which is ordinance 10-20.
Amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020.
Very good. Thank you. Matt Stifler is here to give us our staff report. So please, Mr. Stifler.
Good evening, council. There are no changes from the first hearing of this ordinance.
Very good. Ann, do we have any questions regarding this via email?
No, we've received nothing.
And Sue, have we from the web?
We have not received anything.
Very good. Council comments? Anyone have comments they'd like to make with respect to this? I can't see all of you. Wait, let me get on a different view. Make sure I can see everybody. No? Um, very good. Then Ann, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrums?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Very good. Next up, ordinance 11-20.
Adopting and enacting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Dublin, Ohio.
Thank you. And Jennifer Riedler has our staff report this evening. So please, Jennifer?
Good evening, council members. Just one update. Our codifier, American Legal Publishing, prepared an updated list of city administration, which is in your packet for tonight's meeting. There are no other changes and staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
Very good. Ann, did we receive any comments?
Nothing.
And Sue, any via the web?
No comments or questions.
Okay, questions, comments from council? Hearing none. Ann, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrums?
Yes.
Dr. Keeler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson?
Yes. Yes.
Very good. Ordinance 12-20.
Authorizing the city manager to execute and accept necessary conveyance documents and contracts to accept a sanitary sewer easement from Carmen Michael Villapoto for property owned and located at 7685 Dublin Plain City Road, Franklin County Parcel Number 27400145300.
Very good. Thank you. And Paul Hammersmith has our staff report. So please, Paul?
Good evening, council. I have no updates beyond information provided at the first reading for this item. Staff does recommend approval and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. Thank you. Ann, did we receive any comments via email?
We have not.
And Sue, did we receive any via the web?
No comments or questions.
Very good. Thank you. Council, questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. Ann, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrums?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a budget presentation and discussion, the moment you've all been waiting for, I'm sure. So Dana McDaniel and Matt Stifler are going to be presenting some updates on the budget and conversation for when for what we see in the foreseeable future. So please, Matt, Dana, take it away.
Right. Thank you, members of council. And I'll quickly hand this over to Matt, our interim director of finance, as well as Colleen Gilger, our Director of Economic Development, who will make a few comments as well. And I want to thank them both for working together to put this presentation together for you this evening. This presentation represents our thought process to date, as well as speaks to some of the actions we have taken and are preparing to take. That further explains what we do know and what we think we know about our fiscal situation, keeping in mind that we do expect we'll see an impact in our revenues, as most everyone will, particularly cities in this environment. Our challenge, as Matt will point out, is that we came off of a great first quarter, exceeding our expectations. So we're barely three weeks into the impact and what that might look like right now. So we're going to try to project off that as best we can. But given the extension of filing dates and so forth, it's going to make it a little bit more challenging for a couple more months to get a more accurate understanding of the impact. We do have ideas going forward as to how to pump the brakes on our operating budget and also look into our capital budget for savings as well as we go forward. But we'll probably address that a little bit later in another presentation in regards to the capital budget more specifically. But of course, we'll keep council informed as we move along and look forward to working with council on this situation as we progress. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, Colleen.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that you can see the appropriate slide. Okay, great. Good evening, members of council. Tonight's presentation will provide information on the initial estimates of the financial impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on the city of Dublin. This public health emergency and the resulting measures necessary to keep people safe have created a negative financial impact on individuals, businesses, and all levels of government on a worldwide scale. We are still in the very early stages of managing this emergency and understanding its financial impact. Tonight's presentation will provide our best current estimate of this emergency's impact and detail our plan to respond to this emerging and ongoing situation. Tonight, we will examine the initial response to this emergency, provide information on the financial impact, outline some of the actions we have taken to support the safety of our employees as they continue to deliver essential services to our residents. We will also discuss the guiding principles that will inform our decisions as we make budget revisions to maintain our fiscal health. We will also discuss the initial impact on expenditures, estimated impact on revenues of the city, outline expenditure reductions, and identify some potential next steps. This emergency is having a swift systemic impact on all revenues. This presentation includes our best assessment of the anticipated revenues, but it's important to understand that we are at the very early stages of this emergency and there is more we don't know than what we do know. As this emergency unfolds and we collect additional information and data, we will incorporate this information into our models and make the necessary adjustments. In some cases, as will be explained in greater detail later in this presentation, the timeframe for this required information becoming available is July or August. We will use the current estimates to guide our initial response as we make adjustments to the 2020 operating and capital budget and create future budgets for 2021. We will continuously inform council and make certain you are able to provide the appropriate guidance and direction. We will outline policy options available to you in a timely manner as we continue to navigate this emergency. This emergency is impacting tax revenues associated with income taxes, motor fuel, hotel motel, and property taxes. It will impact intergovernmental fund revenues, such as the local government fund, as state tax GRF revenues decline. Additionally, the public health measures currently in place and the speed at which they are relaxed or removed will impact our ability to deliver services and earn the associated revenue with recreation pool and special event activities. Our initial response to these revenue declines has been to perform the following actions: An identification and impact analysis on all funds, including the Capital Improvement Fund, tracking of all COVID-19-related expenditures for reimbursement, and the continued advocacy at the federal and state level for funding to support critical local government needs. With regards to the operating budget specifically, the city manager has suspended travel and training for the remainder of the year, initiated a hiring freeze with exceptions for key positions as determined by the city manager, and asked division directors to identify a 20% budget reduction in operating expenditures. All of these actions, if all of these actions are implemented, the potential reduction in expenditures is $9.5 million. We have taken the appropriate measures listed here to protect and support the health and safety of our workforce who continue to deliver essential services to our residents. These measures include increasing the level of sanitization and cleaning of city facilities, purchasing essential supplies, including hand sanitizer, PPE, distributing multiple homemade masks to employees, and requiring temperature checks prior to beginning work. Also, we're requiring employees to wear masks inside city facilities and the creation of a remote work policy. We have invested in our technology to support remote work capabilities to increase the social distancing of our operations and now over half the city's workforce is working remotely. We have expanded our mission to include supporting our social service providers and maintaining continuity of the essential delivery services Dublin's homebound population relies upon. Finally, we have engaged in discussions with organizations in our community who may require additional support as a result of this emergency. As we begin to develop our plan of response, the following principles will guide our actions. We will continue to provide essential city services to our residents. As necessary, we will expand our mission to act as a critical backstop for the essential social service agencies and partners during this time. We will support our workforce. Retaining the ability to respond to the emerging needs of our community requires an available workforce. Our pandemic plan estimates a reduction in available force of 25 to 40%. Fortunately, we have not experienced it at this time, but we are in the very early stages of this pandemic and need to carefully manage the availability of employees as it is critical to our ability to respond. As this emergency subsides, it will be important to emerge fast and strong to maintain our fiscal health and economic vitality. To that end, we are prioritizing our ability to deliver information to our business community and continue development projects in the pipeline. This will ensure that we emerge as financially strong as possible. Finally, we will prioritize maintaining our fiscal health. We will continue to create revenue estimates and seek council's guidance to adjust our expenditures accordingly. We may elect to postpone or scale down new initiatives and, when appropriate, we will engage in a discussion on the use of general fund reserves. This chart outlines the current revenue and expenditure estimates. The remainder of this presentation will provide the details that explain every aspect of this table in more detail. However, I wanted to give you the bottom line upfront. In the left-hand column, we have our 2020 operating budget numbers. Because of the uncertainty surrounding the city's revenues, we are utilizing a revenue range denoted by best, moderate, and worst-case scenarios to estimate revenues. As more information becomes available, the best, moderate, and worst-case scenario range will decrease and converge to a credible estimate regarding the city's revenues. As this credible estimate is revealed, the administration will continue to develop expenditure reductions as appropriate and seek council's guidance in order to determine an acceptable 2020 operating budget. This credible estimate will not be available until July or August. At this time, based on the best-case revenue scenario and the expenditure reductions already implemented or under strong consideration by the city manager, the city would have a positive budget variance of almost $2 million and the general fund balance would be almost 75% at year-end. Under a moderate scenario, using the same expenditures, the negative budget variance would be just shy of $6 million, leaving a general fund balance of almost 69%. Under the worst-case scenario, the negative budget variance grows to almost $16 million. Even in this scenario, and using the general fund balance to close this variance and making no additional expenditure reductions, the general fund balance remains above 50%, closing the year at an estimated 60%. This does not mean that any of the policy decisions that would lead to this result have been made. Rather, it is to demonstrate that even facing the current worst-case scenario and filling all of the resulting budget imbalance completely with general fund reserves, which is not what we are proposing and not what we would propose, the general fund balance remains strong. As this emergency unfolds, if we move into a situation where revenues approach the current moderate or worst-case scenario, policy options to lower expenditures that are currently being developed will be brought forward for council's consideration. It is also important to note that in the moderate or worst-case revenue scenarios, some level of expenditure reduction will occur as a result of things that are not occurring in these scenarios. For example, the current worst-case scenario has the pool remaining closed all season, but the current expenditure estimate has the city expending funds for pool operations. There are too many possibilities at this time to project expenditure reductions for all the things that may not occur as a result of this emergency. As more details regarding the economic reopening are known and additional information impacting the city's revenues are revealed, the budgeted expenditures will be adjusted accordingly. This will be an evolving process that will require patience through July or August. Now, having seen the bottom line, this presentation will move into the details regarding the current revenue estimates and initial expenditure reductions discussed on this slide. However, before we move into that revenue discussion, I wanted to provide a quick update on COVID-19's current impact on our expenditures. To date, this emergency has not resulted in a significant increase in expenditures. Current expenditures related to COVID-19 are estimated to be just above $70,000, with the majority of these expenditures in information technology to support the city's workforce moving towards remote working. These expenditures may be eligible for reimbursement and are able to be absorbed within the city's current appropriations. This emergency has not and is not expected to have a significant impact on expenditures. The primary issue is the downward trend in economic activity and the resulting lost revenues. As I mentioned, this emergency is having a swift systemic impact on the city's revenues. This slide identifies the revenue sources impacted by this emergency. This presentation will examine the major revenue sources identified in bold. Because of the evolving and ongoing nature of this emergency, it is presently impossible to make a revenue prediction. Therefore, certain assumptions are being made to develop a best, moderate, and worst-case scenario. The best and worst cases do not represent the absolute best or absolute worst case, but rather a reasonable estimation of the best and worst case available at this time. If information becomes available that indicates the estimated range is no longer reasonable, then the best or worst case will be adjusted accordingly. Again, we really won't be able to determine a revenue estimate until the July or August timeframe, but we'll continue to make regular adjustments to the revenue estimates as information becomes available. Moving into income tax. Income tax is the city's largest revenue source. It accounts for almost 60% of the city's total revenue, 90% of general fund revenue, and 85% of the Capital Improvements Fund revenue. The 2020 budget estimate for income tax was $89.3 million. This revenue is distributed 75% to the general fund and 25% to the Capital Improvement Fund, which is the main fund of our capital budget. The current estimated range of reduction in income tax revenue is between $4 million and $18.6 million. And the following slides will detail those estimates a little bit more. For some perspective, income tax revenue is composed of three distinct types of filings: withholding, net profit, and individual taxpayers. The chart in the upper right-hand corner demonstrates the relative size of each type, withholding representing 78% and the largest share of income taxes. The table at the bottom provides some historical context to the variability of each type of revenue and provides a comparison to the 2020 budget amount. Each of these types of revenue will be impacted differently by this emergency. Income tax withholdings are employer withholdings for individuals working in Dublin and are paid to the city approximately every two weeks. It is important to note that through the first quarter of 2020, withholdings were up 8.1% or $1.5 million over 2019. The current estimated revenue decline under the best-case scenario is $0, with a worst-case scenario representing a reduction of $3.6 million. In order to narrow this estimated range, we need to continue to examine withholding payments as they arrive in the Division of Taxation. The attached table shows the type of information we'll be examining as part of this process. It demonstrates that outside of the top 10, declines in withholding revenue have been below 4%. In the top 10, there were several employers that announced layoffs prior to the COVID-19 emergency, so those may be impacting this category. Now, this is a sample size of 20 days. It is entirely too small to make any credible conclusions, but we can use it to inform our estimated revenue range. The current downward trajectory over the first 20 days in April is $400,000. Given that a majority of the withholding revenue is received two days per month, we can conservatively estimate that total April withholdings may be down as much as $500,000. Projecting that out to the end of the year, the decline would be $4.5 million. As I mentioned, the current surplus in the first quarter was $1.4 million, so we end up near that $3.6 million decline in the worst-case scenario. As we would expect, the economic reopening to begin in the coming months, economic activity and withholding revenue should increase over this time, reducing this negative variance in the coming months. As we get additional withholdings by monthly payments and the path towards economic recovery becomes clear, we can narrow the estimated range. In addition to the analysis by our Division of Taxation, our Economic Development Division is proactively contacting businesses. Colleen Gilger, our Director of Economic Development, will now provide some additional information gathered as part of their outreach efforts.
Good evening. I'm going to have Matt run the slides for me here. I'm going to spend the next several slides discussing economic development outreach and some early findings within certain industries and projects. The Economic Development Team has been in constant outreach mode for several weeks now by phone, email, and video conference. After each in-depth conversation, we categorize the company by color with green, yellow, or red, and we share our notes with the Finance and Tax Office so that they can cross-reference what we're hearing from our companies and what they're seeing in tax collection. As you can see by the slide, green is about sixty-five percent of our calls. The companies are at business as usual, but in a work-from-home environment. Twenty percent we've categorized as yellow, so they're in a cautionary group where we're keeping an eye on them, and there really is a need for them to get back open pretty quickly. And about fifteen percent of our calls are categorized as red, where they are in trouble with loss of large revenue or they're experiencing layoffs and furloughs. This is particularly in the retail, restaurant, and hotel hospitality industries. We've also done webinars with the SBA to discuss the details of the Paycheck Protection Program and the SBA loans and grants that are available, where we had over two hundred of our companies participate. We've worked with the Dublin Chamber on an employee survey. And finally, as we prepare to gradually reopen businesses, we'll be working with CPI, the Chamber, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau on an open-for-business restart campaign with our business community. Are there any questions before I move on?
Colleen, I have just one question. As we are gathering.
You don't know, Colleen?
Oh, I'm sorry. What's that?
Chris, I'll let you go ahead.
As we are calling these folks and gathering this data, are we also keeping track of their field of business so that we can start to maybe perhaps see some trends of the companies that are the least to the greatest impacted other than the the obvious ones in terms of restaurants and hotel tourism, those kinds of things?
Yes, we are. We are categorizing as we're calling them. So we're calling certain industries, we're calling certain sizes of companies, we're calling our top businesses. So as we're talking to them, we're getting a very good indication of what's going on with very specific industries, and I will actually hit upon that in some of my next slides.
Thank you.
Colleen?
Yes.
So out of the companies that attended the SBA, are you guys able to sort of determine how many of them actually were able to obtain loan numbers successfully?
We did not ask for that feedback. It was really them understanding what information they were going to have to have on hand as they were filling out applications. We do know that just with anecdotal feedback, several companies were frustrated because banks were overwhelmed with calls and applications. There was a bit of confusion with the first rounds to know whether or not applications were processed or denied. So it has been a learning process, I think, for companies and for the banks, and we're very hopeful that the round that launched this morning is going a little smoother. But as we're making more follow-up calls, we are asking those questions to see whether or not these companies did apply and were they successful. So we'll be able to gather that information over the coming months.
Yeah, that's great. I think that's going to be really important in determining how successfully, which businesses are able to keep the doors open or which aren't. Thank you.
Jane, do you have a question? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Say that, thank you. Colleen? I just want to say that you know, these numbers seem to reflect the national numbers, too. I've been reading in the eighty-five percent, these might make this without blistering. So it seems to be it's just heartening to see that that many companies make survival of this. And I just want to thank you for the efforts.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I do, Colleen. I'm curious, when you were talking to these companies, and fifteen hundred companies is quite a large number. On second thought, how many companies do you think are exist in Dublin? Out of that, of that fifteen, what does that represent, majority?
We believe that is a solid majority of our companies that are leasing space in Dublin. We have many companies that might have one or two people that are working from home, so we have a lot of home-based businesses. And in some of the industries that we're trying not to bother right now really are in that restaurant business. So again, anecdotally, we're hearing from them because several of us are ordering food from them. So we're getting some of our information that way. But fifteen hundred is a nice, solid representation of of the business community, mostly in rented office space.
Okay. And was, and quickly, was there anything that, as you talked to these companies, that they were hoping that either the city or the Economic Development Department could do for them that maybe would be revealing in the middle of all of this?
A lot of the questions that they've had for us is just where to find the resources, where to find the information. A lot of them were struggling hearing back from their banks, because again, banks were being flooded with phone calls, and most of those people are working from home right now, too remotely. So it's been more of a frustration with where are the resources? How do they get to those resources and can we help? Another important question that we've been asked is can we introduce them to other Dublin businesses? Because as contracts have started to dry up for some of our smaller businesses, where that's their lifeblood, they've been curious whether or not there are businesses that we can introduce them to where they may be able to help another company and gain small contracts from that.
Well, that's good to know, because in many ways, it kind of gives us a different focus on how we can help by knowing that. Because I don't know if you have the manpower necessary to give all the help they're asking for, but knowing that that there's a real need kind of gives us an idea of where we need to go with with building them back up.
Yes, and we've been very fortunate with our partners at One Columbus and Franklin and Delaware Counties, State of Ohio, and even the federal government with really wonderful resource pages that have been put together that are specific to business industries. So we're able to guide our companies to some great resources from our partners.
Okay, thank you, Colleen.
Hey, Colleen, it's Kathy. I have a question for you, I guess, or Matt. So how did the numbers found here about the, you know, sixty-five, twenty, and fifteen? How do those relate to the estimates on withholding? On the best, worst case, et cetera, so forth? How are we using that to determine sort of best case, it would be sort of no change, worst case about a, I don't know, six or seven percent decline? Can you connect those dots? Maybe that's a question for Matt.
Well, and yes, and I know, too, as we're categorizing our companies with green, yellow, or red, we're listing their name, the company name, and providing a narrative for the Finance and Tax Office about who we talk to and what they're specifically telling us. So they're able to go into those confidential tax records, which I'm not allowed to see, so that they can cross-reference what's being collected specifically by that company and whether or not it matches what we're hearing. So we might target them as green, but if their revenues are very specifically down for that company, Matt might say, well, we might look at them as a red, and then we're able to to identify what's really going on at certain companies. So again, on my side, it's not as scientific with categorizing them by industry, but I believe on on the confidential tax record side, it probably is a little bit more specific. Matt, would you care to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. So the most important thing is that our our largest withholding employers are green, and that helps to inform our estimates. If our largest employers were in the red category, we would have a much different outlook. So we are utilizing those categories to look at the size of the bucket. We know that hotels and restaurants are down as those are a very important sector of our economy, no doubt, but they don't necessarily drive withholdings in the same way that our office buildings do. So we're using those green, yellow, red estimates and then following that up with the taxation division. The yellow gives the tax division an area to focus, so we know what might not be green, so they know right where to look, and that helps to inform those decisions going forward.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we will move on here. And this slide is very specific, brief overview on what we're seeing in those specific industries, as was asked earlier. So with healthcare being the most front and center right now, they seem to be holding strong. Doctors, dentists, and elective procedures look to be returning very soon, which is great news for medical revenues, for instance, which make up significant portions of revenue at our hospital. And this is also good news for the medical workforce in order to keep even the nonessential employees in the healthcare industry at work. The automotive supply chain has seen a significant downturn in orders and in revenue. Additionally, auto dealership sales have declined while inventory remains very high at this time. With the IT sector, IT companies, it depends on the industries they're specifically serving. They're either booming with increased contracts like Updox, which is doing a lot of telemedicine work, or they're struggling with loss of revenues and contracts from some of their larger companies, which have put a hold on moving forward with some telecommunications or IT projects. We're definitely keeping a close eye on the IT industry specifically. Next, the large headquarters seem to be faring very well and keeping workforce intact with almost all of them working from home. We're hearing about some declines in bonuses and commissions being paid out, as well as executives cutting their own pay in order to keep all of their employees in a paid status. Most of these companies are enacting hiring freezes and have ceased travel. That's not good for the hotel industry in Dublin, which sees a lot of their revenues from business travel, but we do hope that this does pick back up later in the year. Business services in general seem to be holding in there, although several have reported slowdowns in their revenue streams. And then there's the hospitality and retail industry, which we've already touched on, which by far is the hardest hit, not only in Dublin, but pretty much everywhere. We remain hopeful that these organizations will bounce back once they are able to reopen under new standards. Moving on, as you recall, in 2019, we had a record year in economic development for the number of economic development agreements that we did and the job commitments we received from companies. This is a very hopeful slide, as we're providing you with very positive updates on all of these projects that continue to move forward, whether they are in moving stages, construction stages, or hiring stages. So all of those companies listed there, we have heard from, and they all continue to move forward on their projects, which was great news because by approving those agreements in nineteen, we were hopeful to start to see those job commitments come to Dublin in twenty and twenty-one. So we believe that them coming in should help balance things out a little bit. And moving on, we still have quite a bit of project activity, which is great news. We're actively reviewing and completing construction permits in the Building Department, and this is over all sizes and industries of companies. So it's everyone from restaurants doing patio permits to large tenant improvements going on in our multi-tenant office buildings. Construction is also continuing on many projects like VA Data, Bridge Park, and The Corners. And we're actively monitoring the local job market as well. As of today, the Ohio Means Jobs website showed more than eighteen hundred job openings just in Dublin zip codes. So it's showing that companies in Dublin are still actively hiring. So that's great news to end on, and I will turn things over back to Matt Stifler.
Thank you, Colleen. Individual filing revenue was seven point nine, seven point six million dollars in 2019 and represented eight percent of income tax revenues. As you can see, the scenarios indicate an expected revenue decrease of eight hundred thousand to two million under the conditions that are outlined on the slide. This is one of two components of income tax that will take a significant amount of time to credibly estimate. The reason for this is the filing deadline was moved from April to July. As you can see by the graph on the right showing the monthly collection of individual taxpayer revenue, a significant amount of this revenue is collected at the filing deadline. So the decline in revenue in April is actually a result of two distinct factors, as I outlined in the previous memo to council. The delay in the filing deadline creates a cash flow delay, and the economic conditions create an expectation for reductions in this revenue. Until the delay in cash flow is resolved, that is until the filing deadline, we don't know which is the cause of the reduction in revenue, whether this is a true decline or a decline because of the cash flow. And we won't have an ability to estimate this until we reach that deadline in July. The other type of income tax that faces this similar issue is net profits. Net profit revenues are paid on a quarterly basis. A business will pay an estimated amount based on their estimated profits for the year. Last year, these revenues totaled thirteen million dollars. We believed at that time that about three million dollars of this revenue was a one-time occurrence, but in prior years, these payments are due in April, June, September, and December, as you'll see in the graph. In 2020, the deadline for these payments for both the first quarter and the second quarter is July fifteenth. There's a great deal of uncertainty regarding the potential impact, the general decline in activity and its impact on businesses will have on this revenue, and this uncertainty is reflected in our best and worst-case scenario estimates. The best-case scenario reflects a three point two million dollar decrease. Well, the worst-case scenario reflects that no net profits tax is collected, and it includes a potential loss for carryforward losses for up to the next five years. This component of income tax will also take some time before we can credibly estimate it. The filing deadline was moved from April to, from April to July. As you can see by this graph on the right showing the monthly collection of net profit revenue, a significant amount of revenue is collected at the filing deadlines. As with individual filings, the revenue decline in April is a result of two distinct factors: the cash flow delay and the economic conditions creating an expectation for reductions. In July, the cash flow delay will be resolved because of the filing deadline. Additionally, these quarterly payments will give the Division of Taxation some important information on a business's expectation for its profitability in 2020. As these estimated payments are collected, we'll be able to estimate the total net profits in 2020. This revenue has the largest estimated range of almost ten million dollars between the worst and best-case scenarios. And unfortunately, without these estimated payments, it's not really possible to credibly narrow this estimate. Do you have any questions on income tax revenues, or would you like to hold questions till the end?
Matt, I have a question regarding the net profit withholdings and the individual filings. Do we have any idea of percentage quantity filed as composed of previous years? So if we have ten thousand of them filed, you know, many people had their tax preparation done, you know, largely by when things shut down on or about March thirteenth, seventeenth. Of that, if there was ten thousand, have we, have there been five thousand that have been processed? Or do we have any idea of what percentage of those have actually come to fruition?
I don't have that number, but I will ask our taxation division to look at a number of returns filed type analysis.
Thank you.
Okay. Another significant revenue source for the city is motor fuel tax, commonly referred to as the gas tax. It's collected by the state and then distributed by formula to municipalities and other political subdivisions. Retailers collect the tax at the point of sale and then remit it monthly to the state. The state calculates the total collected and then remits the money to municipalities the following month. As this emergency began in March, the city will begin to see the revenue decrease in May and feel the full impact of the stay-at-home order in June. In 2020, this revenue was estimated to be two point four million dollars. This represented a significant increase over 2019 revenue because of the increase in gas taxes in July 2019. This represented a significant increase over 2019 revenue because of the increase in gas taxes in July 2019. This increases at the time was estimated to be about $1 million. This money is distributed by the Ohio Revised Code to the Street Maintenance Fund and the State Highway Repair Fund. Both of these funds are part of the operating budget. Additionally, beginning in 2020, because of the estimated $1 million increase in gas tax revenue due to the increase in the tax itself, a transfer totaling this amount from the two operating funds to the capital fund was budgeted. This is important because as revenue from this tax decreases, the city can make a determination whether the impact of this reduction will be felt in the operating or capital budget or both. And as the revenue for the operating and capital budgets are finalized, this decision on how to allocate any reductions across these budgets can be made. As I said, the collection of city gas tax revenues is delayed by two months. Therefore, we will see a partial impact in May and the full impact in June. In the meantime, absent revenues numbers, we have sought out to try to find some additional information and data that might inform our estimates as to what this decline might look like. This graph on the right is from the U.S. Information Administration. It displays the number of barrels supplied in the United States of finished motor gasoline on a weekly basis dating back to 1990. As you can see by the graph, the decline in gasoline supplied is significant. In February 2020, there were almost 9,000,000 or 9 million barrels supplied weekly. In the first two weeks of April, the supply was down to 5 million barrels per week. This graph will not perfectly predict the expected revenue decline in gas taxes, but it has helped to inform our initial estimates. In May, when retailers pay their collections to the state of Ohio, the Finance Department will be contacting the state to gain some additional information relative to this decline. As a result of the previous graph, our estimates for gas tax revenue reflect a 50% decline in revenue of varying durations reflecting the uncertainty of the timeline surrounding the economic reopening. The best-case scenario reflects a decline of $282,000. Well, the worst-case scenario reflects a decline of almost $1 million. As you can see, we'll be taking additional actions over the coming months to better estimate the monthly decline. But an estimate for how long the decline is likely to last may take until July or August, as more information regarding the speed and success of the economic recovery process begins to become available. Hotel or motel bed taxes are budgeted for $3.6 million in 2020. This revenue is distributed 35% to the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau and is deposited into an agency fund. The remainder is deposited into the bed tax fund with a distribution of 25% to the Arts Council, while the city retains 40%. This use tax is one of the most quickly and severely impacted tax revenues. It's also important to note that the DCVB and the DAC have contacted the city about how these revenue estimates will impact their organization. This discussion is part of a potential next step for council outlined at the end of this presentation. The DCVB has estimated that bed tax revenues will fall to $1.3 million a year, a reduction of 64%. Bed tax revenue collection is similar to other use taxes discussed earlier. The hotels located in Dublin remit the tax the month following its collection. Dublin calculates the amount collected and remits that amount to the DCVB and Arts Council the following month. It is estimated that there will be almost $0 in bed tax collected in April, following a steep decline in March collections. The $0 collected by hotels in April will impact the city in May and these organizations in June. Bed tax revenues are estimated to decline between $1.4 and $2.4 million. As you can see, the DCVB estimate previously provided is just higher than the worst-case scenario presented here. It was $1.3 million. Several weeks ago, when the city and DCVB discussed bed tax revenue, they were projecting $0 in revenue for up to four months. That estimate is reflected in the best-case scenario above. This demonstrates that as more information has become available in just the span of a few weeks, the estimated impact on this revenue has changed from the best case to near the worst case. This amount of uncertainty means that any attempts to use a single estimate for this revenue source, or really any other revenue source discussed in this presentation, is likely to be revised by a significant amount as this emergency unfolds. It validates our ranged approach and provides evidence that a ranged-based approach correctly identifies the true uncertainty we are currently facing. It's important to note that a significant percentage of hotel stays in Dublin are for business travel, and that this type of travel may not be returning quickly. Dublin hotels may recover at a slower rate than the industry norm. In order to narrow this estimated range, more information on the speed of the economic reopening, as well as the demand for hotels once they reopen, will be necessary. And this information will not be available likely until one month after hotels are reopened.
Matt, this is Kathy before you move on. How much have we collected through March before the, the crisis began? What, what's our year-to-date number?
I can get you that information, but I'd have to look in munis, and I don't want to do that with the presentation up, but I will get that information to you.
Yeah, those were probably January, February, March, probably not the strongest months for us, but still pretty decent. So some of this, we can say is in the bank. I'll be interested in what that number might be.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Property taxes are the most resilient form of taxation, and that is reflected in the revenue estimates presented here. Overall, we collected just over $4 million in 2019 and budgeted for just under that amount in 2020. These revenues are distributed to the Safety Fund and the Operating Budget and the Capital Improvement and Parkland Acquisition Fund in the capital budgets. Property taxes remain at or above budget in the best and moderate case scenarios. And in the worst-case scenario, they decrease by only $23,000. In addition to these revenue estimates, important to note that there are, there is a potential delay in the second half property taxes due to a change, a potential change in the tax deadline from June 22nd to August 5th. This would delay the receipt of some of these funds. The city will still be able to request in advance, so it's unclear of exactly how much funding might be delayed. But even, even if this delay occurs, this cash flow problem is not anticipated to have a significant impact on the city's operations. The final revenue source to discuss is charges for service revenue for recreation-related activities. In 2020, the budgeted revenue for these services was $3.8 million, and these revenues were deposited into the Recreation Fund 225. As council is aware, the cost-recovery policy requires revenues to exceed 50% of the expenditures plus the assigned capital improvement project cost. As recreation revenues decrease due to the facility being closed, there will be a corresponding decrease in expenditures. However, the distribution of fixed costs versus marginal costs to provide services has not yet been determined. As revenue falls, fixed costs will remain, and even when revenues return, it's very possible that they will be insufficient to hit the required cost-recovery target set by council. This is another potential topic for discussion identified in the next steps at the close of this presentation. As the graph on the right displays, recreation revenues are heavily seasonally dependent. June and July and the day camps scheduled at that time bring in a significant amount of revenue. And the closure or inability to deliver these services will have a significant impact on the recreation's annual revenues. It's also important to note that the recreation revenues are collected at the time the service is reserved. However, if that service is not provided, then the revenue will be refunded to the customer. This means that recreation revenues need to be adjusted from when the revenue is collected and entered into the system to when the service is scheduled to be provided. This just introduces an additional layer of complexity and estimation to the analysis, makes it a little more difficult. But it's something we're attempting to, to make adjustments for. The potential impact on this revenue varies significantly as the potential end date and demand for recreation services is not known at this time. The best-case scenario includes the facility's current closure in March and April. And for the purposes of estimating a revenue impact only, estimates the facility would remain closed in May. In this scenario, the revenue decline is approximately $725,000. In the worst-case scenario, recreation revenues would decline $2.4 million, and the facility would remain closed through August with sluggish demand returning in September and October. In order to narrow this estimate, the public health situation and the speed of the economic recovery will have to be better understood. As soon as the recreation center reopens and the demand for services can be determined, this revenue estimate can begin to narrow. At this time, the information is simply unknown. And finally, it's worth noting that because of the declines in revenue, some federal and state funding may become available. At this time, the CARES Act provided $150 billion to state and local governments. Unfortunately, this funding is tied to expenditures narrowly defined as eligible purposes noted on the slide. As council saw earlier in this presentation, the city's current expenditures totaled around $70,000. Even then, the $70,000 in spending only clearly fits into criteria one and three, but it may fall short depending on the interpretation of criteria two, as it was within the currently approved budget. This uncertainty will be resolved in the coming weeks and months as the city pursues reimbursements for all eligible expenses through the appropriate channels and the guidelines are clarified. However, in order to fully deal with the scale of the revenue losses caused by this emergency, the city of Dublin, along with numerous other local governments and organizations, are advocating for an additional stimulus to replace lost revenues, as well as a reduction in the restrictions for the previously provided $150 billion. The decision on this funding will require an approval of Congress and the president. And at this time, the potential size of reimbursement for lost revenues, if any, is unknown. As this information becomes available, it may greatly influence the level of expenditure reduction required to meet the challenges posed by this emergency. And now we'll examine some initial expenditure reductions actions taken by the administration. In order to address the estimated decline in revenues, the city manager has implemented the following actions. The suspension of travel and training for the remainder of the year. It's estimated that this action will save around $500,000. A hiring freeze for all open positions unless specifically exempted by the city manager, estimated to save about $1.2 million for full-time employees. And in addition to the above, the city manager asked division directors to identify a 20% reduction in operating expenditures, including what impact that would have on their service delivery levels. If this implementation, if this reduction was implemented, the estimated expenditure reduction is $7.8 million across all operating funds. In total, these actions would reduce operating expenditures by $9.5 million. In addition to these actions, there are some other areas of expenditure reduction being evaluated. They include identifying full and part-time vacant positions that are not captured as part of the hiring freeze to identify any unnecessary appropriations that can be reduced, analyzing areas of consistent budget surplus in prior years, and identifying the costs associated with canceled services or events, particularly in the moderate and worst-case revenue scenario, so that if cancellations occur, revenue losses and related expenditure reductions are easily available. As this emergency progresses through the next several months and the revenue estimates become more defined, additional revenue reductions may become necessary. As previously discussed, this slide shown earlier puts all the revenue estimates and expenditure reductions together to begin to develop what a revised 2020 operating budget might look like. As previously noted, the current moderate and worst-case scenarios identify revenue deductions that may have a corresponding expenditure reduction associated with them. As this emergency unfolds, if some of the outcomes specified in those scenarios are in fact realized, then the corresponding reductions in expenditures will be incorporated in this model. As previously mentioned, the best example of this is the pool fund. In the worst-case scenario, for the pool fund, if it's realized, the pool would not open at all in 2020, and no revenue would be earned. The expenditures necessary to operate the pool can then be reduced from the operating expenditures presented here. These types of reductions have not been done because the number of possible outcomes that would potentially include expenditure reductions is extremely large. And calculating the associated expenditures for these scenarios, revenue reductions is not as straightforward for most activities outside of the pool example being discussed here. In summation, the proposed plan moving forward is to continue to update the range of revenue estimates until they converge on a credible figure. Once this figure is known, then expenditure reductions necessary to approach that revenue estimate will be brought forth for discussion. If the revenue estimate approaches the moderate to worst-case scenario, then also included in the expenditure reduction discussion will be a discussion regarding the use of general fund reserves. Presently, even under our worst-case scenario estimates with no additional expenditure reductions, which would not be our recommendation, the general fund balance remains well in excess of the 50% required by our general fund policy. This emergency may ask council and the administration to make difficult decisions, and those decisions may require even more difficult actions. However, the history of strong financial management and sound fiscal policies will ensure that Dublin emerges from the COVID-19 emergency with its fiscal health and economic vitality in place, while providing for the safety and security of our residents and employees. Finally, this slide begins to identify some potential next steps. I'd be happy to research any additional information requested by council. In addition, we'll continue to refine the revenue estimates and identify and calculate expenditure reductions for consideration. As a result of this emergency, there are numerous topics that require discussion and direction from council. Some of those topics are identified on this slide. We would request the council direct staff as to how they would like to proceed, whether these discussions are best handled in a finance committee or with council as a whole. And with that, it concludes tonight's presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Matt, I have a question for you.
Matt, can you hear me?
Oh.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, is that?
On the Fed and the
John, we may have to have you use the type function for your questions. You appear to, or audibly, we can't hear you. You're coming in and out, so I don't know if you want to do, do the type feature, and perhaps we could take Jane's question and you could
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, so Matt, I wanted to ask you on the, on the revenue projections, on the best, worst, the best, moderate, and worst. So on the worst, would it be fair to say it's about, you're looking at about a 15% reduction? What would be the percentage of loss of revenue over the best, moderate, and worst? What, what percentage would that be? I'm kind of trying to figure, but it looks like it's about a 15% loss of revenue. And I asked that, just wondering if that's, I know this is very fluid and we won't know, but is worst?
It's about a 23% reduction. It's a 20, 22.7 million dollar reduction on a $92.9 million base.
Okay.
23% reduction.
Okay, and then one other question I wanted to ask you, and I know this is a little bit early, but we're looking at ways to cut our expenditures and the loss of revenue. But the one aspect that I do wonder about, and luckily it hasn't happened so far, but COVID-19, the virus can also cost us money. If we get sick employees, we lose first responders. We have to hire in people that we didn't expect we have to, to make replacements. Those are all risk factors. I don't know how that figures into kind of the discussion.
Absolutely, as part of the discussion, as a self-employed or self-insured entity, we face those risks. Luckily, at this point, we have not seen those expenditures. But if, if the emergency turns to a situation where we're having those type of expenditures occur, then we will adjust our healthcare spending upward essentially, and then have to account for that as part of these expenditure estimates moving forward.
Right, and then the, and the last thing that I'd just like to request, and I know we're looking at two years out, but as we do this, I would love to see a five-year budget projection. And I understand that that's something that you would have to keep plugging into year after year after year. But if the recession is any indicator, things don't always pop back in a year or two, even though this is a more unusual situation. It's hard to know if this is a V recovery, a U recovery, a recovery like a very slow freight train, who knows? But it would be nice to see a projection out five years, too. Thank you.
That's something we can start to look into as we understand 2020 better and, and progress through this. If I could go back to Kathy's question one second, she asked about the amount that had been collected year-to-date in the bed tax fund, and it's $988,000 year-to-date. and it's $988,000 year-to-date.
Great. Thank you, Matt. If I could maybe piggyback on Jane's comment, I know it's very, it's difficult to project ahead and maybe five is tough. But if we were to say to take just sort of the moderate, pick the middle category and roll that quarter, three years, I mean, a couple of your comments that I think are important when we think about sort of, you know, how much a next steps are lost carryforwards and some of those things that organizations will be able to use that'll have more than a one-year impact. So I don't know if, 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 just to pick one of the scenarios, I think it'd be pretty darn hard to do more than that. Pick moderate or whatever that is and just help us understand a little bit about what that input pack would be into a following year. So I agree with Jane. It is difficult. I know long, but maybe, maybe at least a look see into, you know, the next year on, on maybe the moderate one. I think that would be helpful because as things get delayed, when you get closer to the end of the year, those look forwards will be important. So thank you for that other number.
Kathy, I think you're exactly right. I think it will probably be a combination of a few best-case columns, a few, you know, in the middle and a few worst, particularly net profits would probably be most likely to be hit harder than some of the others. So that's a great point.
I just, I agree with what's been, with whatever else is said. A couple of quick questions. This one might actually be a Dana question. Do you have a staff augmentation plan if needed?
Right now, we're holding very, very well with the health, the overall health of our employees. Frankly, my augmentation plan was keeping our rec center staff on board, which we have kept on payroll. And that includes a lot of our other than full-time folks to see how the pandemic might affect our workforce. So they essentially were my backup plan. We did some cross-training and the like before some of them departed. And we could probably do that pretty, pretty easily. Obviously, if you get into first responder, which a lot, we have a lot of people who are first responders. Let's remember, obviously, police firing EMS is what we often think about, but we, utility workers and the like are also in that vein as well. But when it comes down to the specialty skills like fire EMS and police, I would imagine we would then start interacting with our other law enforcement and fire EMS neighbors and figure out how to, to cross-level and help each other out. I know our chiefs, be it Washington Township Fire and of course Chief Pice and our police department have great relationships with our peers, their peers out there and will work that way. When it comes to other services, I think we've got enough depth on the bench and we're holding pretty well health-wise and we've instituted a lot of procedures and policies. Actually, a lot of them early on that the governor was talking about today, we've been doing for several weeks now. So it really does, and I'll put this plug in for that, it really does work to help keep people healthy and safer. And we've seen great results from it.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Dana, because that certainly is one of the things that can cause a budget to go pretty haywire pretty quickly. Matt, one other quick question. As, as the city purchases PPE and potentially other cleaning supplies that maybe they norm, the city might not normally purchase, are you tracking those as well for potential reimbursement?
Absolutely. We're tracking every expenditure, even slightly related to COVID-19 at this point in the hopes that someday the regulations might be relaxed and allow for reimbursement. We're also tracking lost revenues so that if the federal stimulus were to come through, we would have readily available estimates of that as well. At this point, as I said, it's, it's difficult because the interpretation of the reimbursement requirements has been extremely narrow. And that's been very disappointing because we have purchased supplies and laptops and items that we would not have purchased otherwise, but we have not made a new appropriation to purchase them. And that difference is a matter of discussion and debate amongst all of us at this point, and we're working through that. And we certainly will advocate our position that we did not intend to purchase laptops and additional PPE and make that case strongly. But that, that is a decision that remains to be seen.
Yeah, I think, I think that even small businesses and nonprofits are having a similar frustration with the payroll protection plan because the definitions are so narrow. But there are other places where they are getting some reimbursement for those types of things, particularly for PPE and cleaning supplies, not as much on the IT front unfortunately, but I just thought I'd ask. So thanks for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would only add too, that you keep in mind that, that we have access to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the County Emergency Management Agency supply chain. So there will be times when we can access supplies through them for certain needs and those things we would not, we would put into our supplies, but we would not be able to recover costs from.
Okay. Other questions for Matt? Anybody? John, did you have interest in typing those in? I think that Maria said
I did. I don't, I don't think they came through.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, shoot.
Yeah, sure.
John, do you want to try speaking now? It sounds like you might be a little clear at this moment.
Yeah, I was just wondering with the Feds and the state funding requests, if the best situation for us would be a direct situation, not run through the state. And the other comment I have, if we, if we do have a a say in this is that I think the distributions, if they're going to make them for us, it's probably best done on a per capita basis. I don't know if we have or will have any say in how that money comes down from federal government.
Well, I would just make you aware that I want to give Mayor Emeros Grooms credit for having been engaged through the Ohio Mayor's Alliance and through the Central Ohio Mayor's Managers Association. That very argument is being taken up through the various municipalities here in central Ohio and really trying to pull together a, a effort to make sure that our congressional delegation at the national level understands that our biggest threat, as Matt pointed out, is the loss of revenues and not so much right now, the COVID costs. Now, it's not to say that cities certainly aren't experiencing COVID costs. They are. And there are, they can be pretty substantial if your, if your fire department or police department, you know, took a hit and you're having to rely a lot on overtime and so forth to cover those costs or other supplies. Or if you're like the, the county, Franklin County, where you've had to set up a convention center to pay for surge capacity and things like that. So certainly that funding is, is well suited for that. But the bigger threat to a lot of the, a lot of the cities, as Matt pointed out, is the loss of revenues. And that voice we're trying to get to the congressional level, we're also trying to get that to the state level so that our state legislature understands that money needs to flow through and it needs to flow through quickly to local jurisdictions, be that cities, villages and townships where, you know, funding and services touch our residents the most, the fastest, and that we think we can best distribute that. So the per capita argument and so forth is, is one that we've been trying to make as well. And I don't know, Mayor, if you want to add anything to that or not.
I was going to share a little bit more of that during roundtable, but it seems like it may be a little bit more prudent now. But yes, I think we will be testifying or I will be testifying to the Economic Recovery Task Force. And John, you make a good point on those very issues. And part of what I intend to do is to outline the federal dollars that are, that are going into individual economies, not, not just the, the reimbursements, but also talk about the payment protect, paycheck protection program. You know, and hopefully we're going to have some more clarity on the number of our residents that receive those kinds of funds relative to residents of other communities that would have received those kinds of funds and really try to paint a holistic picture of the federal money that has been in influx on individual local economies and where Dublin might fit in that. The emphasis, I think, is going to be on the economic recovery and who is it in, you know, as Dana has pointed out a number of times, we are the, the number two economy in the, in the region, central Ohio region outside of the city Columbus itself. And so try to paint the picture of who's, who is poised best to help the government restart this economy and what investments are they making in those local municipalities that will be some of the largest drivers of the economic recovery due to the pandemic. So it's a great point. We have a lot of work to do. I will share with you what day. I, we have not been told yet exactly what day that that, that we're going to appear before that body. But when we do get that day, certainly let everybody know.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good. Anything else for Matt before we move on? I want to make sure we have time for those questions if there is any more. Okay. So Matt asked us a very important question that we've yet to answer is how is it that we want to receive these briefings moving forward? I think he gave us two options. It doesn't mean we're limited to those two. We could come up with a number of others, but council as a whole or the finance committee and what we, where we want these projections and, and modelings and so forth to go. So I'd like to hear from all of you what, what you would like to see, how you would like to see that move forward. Greg.
You know, this issue is obviously going to permeate just about every other decision we make. So it seems to me that council as a whole should receive all this information at the same time and we can grapple with these issues together because this isn't just a finance issue. I mean, this is going to be an issue that, that permeates and controls just about every other decision that we make. We're going to have to run it through this matrix first. So it would seem to me it would save time and it would make sure we are all informed at the same time with the same information if we did this as a group. Plus it would also eliminate staff's need to try to present multiple times.
Okay. Other thoughts? Jane?
I agree with Greg. I, I like the council as a whole approach to it because there is so much to look over and there's so many ways that we can grapple with this. But I also think it would be helpful to have Matt, if it's easy for you, Matt, when you get every couple of weeks, like a summary update on, on revenue incomes coming in, just so, not that we want a presentation, but maybe something you can send through with a, with a council, with a manager memos so that we can just kind of look over it and get a better understanding. So when we come to the meeting, we have an opportunity to do a little number crunching for ourselves and get a better feel for it. Would that be easy enough to do?
Yeah, keeping you updated is an important part of this process. Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Matt, you understand every question?
I do. Okay, all right.
Matt makes everything look easy, so I'm sure we'll, we'll see. Other comments, thoughts of council members?
So there's policy questions in here too, is that correct?
It is. Let me share the screen again.
So I think that I, while I agree that the, the discussion in terms of talking through updates to revenue and expenditures should come to all of council. I take no issue with that. I think that's exactly right. I think that having policy discussions about each of these in all of council may be a little cumbersome and those things we've traditionally relied on committee to, to help do some of that policy discussion and then bring those either options or recommendations to the whole of council as that conversation has been happening. Is that what you're talking about, Matt?
Yeah, absolutely. There are some policy discussions surrounding, you know, the 2020 beautify your neighborhood grants, whether those should be continued or changed or modified in any way. The 2020 bed tax grants as well as potentially the 2021 bed tax grants as a policy discussion. We have some big policy questions surrounding the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Arts Council. I wanted to seek some guidance and information and appropriations for COVID-19 testing might be a council-level priority as opposed to a committee, but I think it, it would fit in either area. There are also some, some policy discussions moving forward around the cost study. This is a comprehensive cost study. And I'd like to talk to council about what that means and the appropriate path forward so that we don't do work that is ultimately not necessary or that we do the work that is necessary depending on the direction of council. We also, because it's unlikely we're going to meet the recreation cost recovery policy, we need to get some guidance and understanding there so that we're handling that appropriately so that everybody understands what is and is not kind of an acceptable cost recovery range for 2020 because it's not likely to be that 50%. There are some other issues regarding administrative offerings such as the tax budget. This is a budget that we do to meet an Ohio revised code requirement. But it's actually probably due starting next month and it would be silly to me to, to do the work necessary to do a tax budget when we don't really have a revenue estimate. And we can delay that almost until the end of August. But that may require the use of some emergency legislation. And I think there's a very right and correct general hesitancy to authorize emergency legislation. But in this case, I'd like to discuss whether we would waive that and under what situations we might waive that so that we can produce a tax budget that is, is more accurate and gives us the maximum amount of time. And obviously, federal reimbursement might be something we discuss at council. So there are some policy discussions on some individual topics in here in addition to the larger revenue and expenditure kind of discussion that we're having tonight.
Yeah, thanks. I, I, so I feel like under the second major bullet, those three, those first three sub-bullets, I feel like those could probably be discussed and options and recommendations brought back to council. But I think those three could be discussed at committee level. I kind of feel like the rest of it though, does need to be discussed at council level. That would be my two cents.
What I would add to that is under the beautify your neighborhood grants, bed tax grants, staff's going to be recommending to just not do those for a while. You can always try to do those later in the year. But to Councilmember Ludo's point, under the Convention and Visitors Bureau, they do have a, a restart program that they would like to undertake. They've given Matt and myself a proposal. We'd like to vet this out a little bit with Finance Committee. I think you've got a meeting between now and your next council meeting. The Convention and Visitors Bureau has told us they can keep, they can afford to keep the lights on, but they're asking for some funding to, for this recovery program, which we could also still brief council on at council meeting. We're going to have to come forward probably with some legislation, emergency legislation to support that. And then the Dublin, I'm sorry, Dublin Arts Council has approached us with a, a request regarding some relief with dollars and support for the remainder of the year, given their situation and reliance on the bed tax. And that's something that probably should be, be vetted out a little bit more. You know, we can do all this at council level, but I think a couple of these in here probably could lend themselves to a discussion sooner rather than later by taking advantage of the Finance Committee meeting that's already scheduled, I believe, on May 5th or in that timeframe.
Dana, can I ask you a question about the Arts Council? Considering that they're coming and needing some funding, the public art piece that was originally intended for next year, I think was something in, there's quite a bit of money in the public art bucket. Is that a, is that an opportunity to transfer, you know, money that's sitting appropriated for something like public art to be utilized for the Arts Council's survivorship?
Sure. And David Gillen, I want to thank him for laying out a, some options for us, which included some deferring of capital projects, either for the Arts Council building or art and public places construction or a forgiveness, if you will, of, of lease payment or any number of those kinds of things combined to try to get them through. We had asked for some more information, which he's providing us so that we can understand what that month-by-month gap is that they have. And then could better inform you as to what we would recommend relative to that. And much credit to Scott Dring as well. He's done the same thing. We'd asked him for information, which he readily provided as well. And, you know, came forward with, hey, we can keep the lights on for a while, which is great. And at their expense, and, but then they are asking for some funding for this, this program to get, to help get the hospitality industry back up and running. So I think, I think we're, we're very supportive of that. Just like to have a discussion about how.
Okay. I agree with Christina. I think Okay. I agree with Christina. I think the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Arts Council is probably good conversation for Finance Committee, but I think the rest is important enough for whole council to. That's my consideration.
Thank you, Jane. Other council members like to weigh in on on that?
Yeah, I'll 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 agree with that. It seems like some of those immediate. I want to call them more detail oriented. It seems to make sense to send those to committee, but the others to bring back to council. I concur with my colleagues on that.
Andy, John?
I concur as well.
And I concur as well. I think I think we ought to hold off on the bed checks and the beautification efforts until late into the fall. But this should be an all council decision as far as this information. It's important.
Okay, well, they are looking for, I want to pause for a minute. Matt, could you please take the sharing of your screen down so I can see people again?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I would like to ask Anne if we received any public comment on this budget presentation prior to tonight's meeting?
No, we have not, Chris.
Very good. Thank you. And Sue, have we gotten any online this evening?
No public comment or questions?
Okay. Then there we would we need to make a motion on the reference of this to Finance Committee. Don't know if we want to do that conditional upon the discussions we we set tonight or on the slide that Matt presented it. I think there was more on the slide that Matt prevented presented than than maybe what we might be ready to fight off right now. But I do I did hear that beautify your, or I'm sorry, things relative to the Arts Council and to the Convention and Visitors Bureau would be referred to the Finance Committee for discussion and bring a recommendation back to City Council. And with that, I think I will make that a motion if if anyone would, if I'm right, if I'm A, hearing you all correctly, I think so. And if so, a second of that motion and we'll call the roll on that.
I'll second that.
Very good, Christina. Thank you. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Your amorous grooms?
Yes.
Tequila?
Yes.
Nice marriage, Rosa?
Yes.
Bucks?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Up next, we have on our items of other is the chicken coop. And we have Dana, Jennifer in our planning department, which I think is going to be represented by Claudia Husek this evening. So please take it away.
Yes, thank you. We did receive a request via email from a Ms. Ellen Flood at 7535 Bel Air Avenue regarding the potential installing of chicken coops at the property and raising egg-laying chickens. I had also had addressed this issue previously, and I know there was a history about this sort of thing in the past. So I asked staff to just tee up the history of that. And it's not something that I can administratively agree to or allow or disallow one way or the other. So it was important that I advance this back to council for consideration relative to how you want to handle that. Do you want to, you know, refer it to your Planning and Zoning Commission? Or do you want to act on it tonight or whatever? You need more information, whatever action you might want to take. So with that, I hand it over to Claudia and also our Law Director, Jennifer Rader, has been involved in this as well in the past.
Thank you, Dana. Members of council, we discussed this last in 2015. And as you might recall and was outlined in your memo as well, the only zoning district that allows the raising of farm type animals is rural district. And there are just a few areas in the city that do have that zoning district. Mrs. Flood is in restricted residential, which is an R1 district just east of Dublin Road in the Bel Air, Limerick, that type of area. She has a large lot. She also stated that she has her neighbors on board with that particular request. However, it is not permitted use within the R1 district. Recover this of your lot size, which we had advised her of. And she requested then this issue be brought up to City Council for reconsideration. We've reached out to several adjacent municipalities. Other than Worthington, we've not really found one that allows the raising of chickens in a district other than rural on a two acre lot situation, five acre lot situation. So she she did the one that you all to weigh in on on what council would consider to potentially change in terms of zoning. It would it would ultimately be a change in the zoning code. So I can provide any additional information and we've requested for you all to either refer this to a committee or instruct staff to draft a code amendment.
So what's a pleasure of council? Are we interested in referring this to perhaps the Planning and Zoning Commission? Or would you like to keep it at council level? Greg's got his.
Can I ask a question here? So Claudia, if I understood the memo, in 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 none of the surrounding suburbs that you sort of inventoried, would this particular piece of property be allowed to house chickens?
Except for Worthington.
Except for Worthington. So there's only one where her specific circumstance, if we adopted other structures, zoning structures, there's only Worthington where her specific case would be allowed.
Correct.
Claudia, this is Kathy. So council in 2015 was I guess this came before and decision not to make a change. Has there been anything in sort of in the background or situation that would have changed from 2015 to today that we should be aware of?
So that's an interesting point, and thank you for that question. In 2015, the family actually had chickens illegally found out by our code enforcement staff. But one step was resolved one way or the other. I don't know what happened to those chickens, but we have not had anybody approach us about the subject now.
So this, you know, certainly has implications not only to that homeowner, but surrounding homeowners, et cetera. So
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. It is. It's not as it's not as simple as is it allowed in R1? Is it allowed in in our one lot bigger than an acre? Is it allowed in a PUD? It is. It's a it's a very it's a very big subject to take on, which we're certainly not afraid of to do. It's just it's just not as simple as this one particular resident.
And and because it's a larger subject and and as we know from our discussions earlier this evening, there's a lot on our table. I just wonder if the timing is right. That's sort of a question that I would have.
I think Andy had a comment. I believe I saw him.
A couple, a couple of comments. When I read the memo, you indicate that you did benchmarking and didn't necessarily get into the specificity of the lot size. But you indicated that the city of Columbus, Franklin County, and Bexley allow chickens in addition to Worthington. So there's there are nuances between those communities that would allow or not allow depending on the lot size.
That's correct. We did not include all of the benchmarking in this particular memo because we wanted to know frankly, from a staff perspective, if you were going to go in that direction. And then we can certainly put that information together. Franklin County has this point system where depending on your lot size, you get points per chicken, so to say. So that's probably the worst, not that it's 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 a it's a system where depending on how big your lot is, the more chickens you can have. And it's hens. It's not roosters. So that's one of the things also that a lot of municipalities do if they do allow it. So if you were to defer this to a committee or you would defer it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we would certainly include all of that information.
I understand that I would say most people would say, really? Chickens in Dublin? But from her point of view, she's seeing other communities that allow it. She doesn't probably understand the nuances. And so there's sort of a progressive movement to allow chickens. People don't necessarily know all the details. I'm certainly open to the conversation, but I agree now is not necessarily the best time. We've got a lot on our plate. But I'm certainly open to having the conversation. I think she points out some in her letter, she points out some, I think, sensible requirements that would need to be met. And the no rooster rule seems to be pretty much universally accepted. So I'm certainly open to having the discussion. I just don't know that now's the time.
I would say that I have a similar mindset to Andy's. I I'm open to the conversation. Doesn't I don't know that that would lead me to wanting to change our code or not. I don't think now is a great time for this. I think we do have a lot on our plate. I think we need to get through the next few months and see where things are. But I wouldn't have a problem referring this. Maybe Planning and Zoning is probably the best place for it. You know, just for a discussion and to see what the potential options might be. What are the kind of pros and cons, if you will, of it? And, you know, what would be sort of those reasonable logic tests, if you will? I wouldn't have any problem having a discussion. I'd like to hold off on it for a while, though.
One other thing I want to throw in, just so I don't forget. In fact, maybe I already did forget. Deed restrictions. So most neighborhoods, I would think their HOA would have, I would think a a deed restriction that would prohibit the practice of keeping farm animals. So I think maybe some of the unintended consequences could be avoided through that and that alone. I just wanted to get that in the record so that I don't forget about it.
Understood.
Well, if I am hearing a summary, it's that we'd like to talk about it. Maybe not now. Planning Commission might be the right place, although CSAC could be contemplated to as being an appropriate place for this. Am I? Am I? Is it a fair assumption to what I'm hearing from all of you is that we would like to kind of put this on the table for a bit and circle back to this when when the schedule permitted? Is that a correct summary of what I'm hearing? I got a thumbs up for Christina. Andy, Greg, Kathy, Jane. John's video is freezing up, so I'm not getting anything from him.
Yeah. I'd like to see it go to CSAC. I think Planning and Zoning has their hands full with some pretty important stuff, though. But I'm I I agree. I think it's the timing is wrong, but I I'm open to hearing what CSAC would say and and looking into it.
Okay.
Okay, so no official action other than to delay it for now, not referring it to any particular committee. And we can convey that back to Ms. Flood and let her know that this will be taken up at a later date.
Okay. That does not a motion or a vote, so we will just move on from there. Next, we have staff comments. So that brings us to you, Dana.
Thank you. Just one item for tonight. I did give you a memo regarding future event considerations through the summer of 2020. I just wanted to give you an update on that and maybe get a little direction from you. So I first want to thank both Matt Ehrman and Allison Leroy. They're both on, should we need them here this evening to address this as well regarding upcoming major events, which you're familiar. The Memorial Day celebration that we traditionally have, the Independence Day celebration activities, as well as the Irish Festival. In regards to Memorial Day, we have been working with the event organizer. You all know Lieutenant Colonel Retired Jeff Noble very well from the from the from the Veterans Post here locally and does a great job in in coordinating and putting this Memorial Day event together every year, which we're very appreciative of. Jeff has agreed that we would not do certain things this year. And I think even despite the governor's orders today and changes to regarding reopening, I think we still feel this is probably the route we should go. First of all, we would not have the normal Memorial Day processional that we have. Nor would we have the normal ceremonial function quite the way we do at the cemetery. What we're proposing is that there would be, I think you're familiar with what they do. They they toss the the wreath over the 161 Bridge as part of their ceremony, and then they do a at the cemetery itself. Those two events would happen, but they would not happen in a way that would promote or gather a crowd. Instead, they would be videotaped. I think Jeff is looking into how he would modify his guest speaker and so forth, probably videotaped as well. So we would videotape these things and these ceremonies and then provide them on our website or get them out for the public to see and observe on Memorial Day and encourage residents to celebrate Memorial Day in a in a fashion that is respectful and and at their home or in a way that does not promote large gathering. The the luncheon that we typically hold, we would not, we would not do that as well. We would not do that as part of this. So it would really come down to a, again, the two things, the the wreath tossing over the side of the Soda Bridge, Soda River Bridge on 161, as well as the ceremony held at the cemetery to be broadcast. So that that is the plan as of now because we're well within our planning window. We needed to go ahead and make a determination to do that. Relative to Independence Day and the Irish Festival, we've yet to really determine their status at this time. Several communities are going to be discussing the possibility of a regional approach to Independence Day celebrations and events. So something that we suggested to the Central Ohio Mayor's Managers Association in conjunction with the Ohio Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission to have a dialogue among a handful of communities to talk about how they might do Independence Day. And the reason for that is if any one of us were to do certain events, be it fireworks or anything really, and other communities not do anything, then those communities who do something may have the propensity to attract a lot of folks. And I think with Red, White and Boom being canceled, that that would probably even magnify that even more. So we want to be very careful about how we do that. And I think it would be a good dialogue that's scheduled for this week to happen and try to to determine with each other what we might do. And I'll report back on that. It's important that we make a decision regarding July 4th by May 15. And that would be in time, probably at your next council meeting, where we'll have a recommendation in hand about Independence Day based on the outcome of that discussion. And if you have any thoughts, please let us know. You probably noted in the memo, I hope, that there are some other innovative things staff is considering and is welcome and is open to other ideas others might have about how to celebrate Fourth of July without promoting large gatherings. So some of those ideas were were mentioned in the memo. Likewise, and as disappointing, would be what to do about the Irish Festival. And, you know, obviously, we are a very large festival. Generally average, right at around 100,000 people right at on a two and a half day basis. That's a lot of folks in a small area. As we see the pace of things unfolding, I think it's going to be a challenge to pull that off as we traditionally have. Not recommending against that right now, but just want to give you a heads up that we're going to have to make some serious decisions about that. And those decisions are going to really need to be made by June 1st in order that we don't incur costs that we can't recover. We're already and this is no surprise to you. You know, we try to do start our processes with that early. And it would incur, we've incurred about $100,000 in costs with that to date. We have had sponsors that have agreed to roll over into 2020. We have had sponsors uh, that have agreed to roll over into twenty twenty-one. We've had some overseas acts already canceled, about six of those. So we start to lose sort of what the Irish Festival is about on the cultural side, if we have folks that are not traveling and and doing that. So again, you know, we would still try to be innovative and creative in some ways to bring the Irish culture and the spirit of that uh, to our community at about that timeframe if we can. So in imperative that we make a decision on that one by June first uh, or around June first. So we are probably our first meeting in June, we're going to need to have a discussion and have a recommendation on that. I do want to, while I have your attention on this matter, just want to mention the Memorial Tournament. Um, have been in discussions with Dan Sullivan from the Memorial Tournament. As you know, they rescheduled, I believe the dates July thirteenth through the nineteenth. We've decided that we would have a working group on this and that staff, we always have a working group every year, working with a tournament on plans and preparations. This one is about the same. We're adding uh, Franklin County Public Health, who always has a presence out there in the setup and the conduct of the tournament relative to food and so forth, because they are a contract uh, public health agency. But Commissioner Mazzola has committed Nikki Lemon is, is Deputy Commissioner and Director of Environmental uh, Health to participate as a part of our team, so we can have a dialogue with Memorial Tournament about how the tournament may be, may be conducted. And there are a lot of uh, uh, potential obstacles, a lot of challenges for that to be produced in a way that, that could happen uh, within the different uh, parameters that have been set forth and may change. So, you know, while everyone would like to be optimistic that all these events can happen, I think our mentality and all these would be, let's try to be as creative and figure out how to solve the problem as we can and see if we can do that. And we know that we're going to have some hard challenges in pulling that off, no matter what the event is. We're going to have a, have some real challenges trying to figure out how to get that done and get it done in a safe manner in accordance with the guidelines. So I wanted to assure council that we are looking forward on those, thinking forward. Uh, I've got a lot of folks working on these, um, trying to come up with new and additional ideas and uh, uh, obviously trying to not incur costs that we, that we shouldn't have to incur. So anyway, with that, uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, and I can also refer to Allison and Matt in the process. Thank you.
Dana, I know the Convention and Visitors Bureau has been um, doing some really great work on circulating um, events you can do in the city that uh, are not um, that respect social distancing and all those kinds of things. I'm wondering if maybe somebody could put together Memorial Day recommendations on on safe ways to, in fun ways, family ways to um, celebrate. You know, and remember our, our veterans and, and um, those that made the ultimate sacrifice. So uh, you know, perhaps we could get a message out regarding that.
Yeah, that is the plan. I see Allison came up. Allison, I don't know if you have anything, uh, any updates on that? I know the team has been having some
Yeah. And we're working on some videos beforehand. We're working with the schools to do some different things. Um, you know, we actually talked about that the not getting together and having your picnics and going to the store and that kind of thing. This might actually be the year that we really focus on, you know, the meaning of the event. So I think we're really trying to put that out there, what people can do in their homes to celebrate.
Great. Uh, Dana, I'm sure you're going to keep us apprised to all those deadlines of when those decisions need to be made by and um, you know, I, I'd like to hear from my fellow council members, but I, I would like to wait until we approach the deadlines to have significant conversations on that. We'll just I'm hopeful we'll know more. Maybe we won't know anymore, but maybe we will, uh, and that might be impactful on our decisions. Other comments, thoughts?
I'm with you on that, Chris. I think we um, plan for the worst and we hope for the best. And in, in so doing, we hold off on those conversations until we really, really need to have them so that a decision can be made.
Uh, I don't see any reason to make a decision now. If we can delay, let's delay and just see where the chips fall.
Okay. We, yeah, I um, unless somebody feels otherwise. I mean, certainly we want to take advantage of uh, not incurring any costs that we don't have to incur. Um, but at the same time, if, you know, Dana, if you just want to get those those uh, you know, hard stop dates, we'll make sure that we meet them.
Yeah, I hope I didn't come across as though I was asking for any decisions tonight. That certainly was not the case. So uh, yeah, we would, we would anticipate your next council meeting to address Independence Day and then the meeting after that to address Irish Festival.
Great. Anything else on staff comments?
Yeah, just uh, one thing, uh, Allison, I think it, it's possible, highly probable that, you know, some things won't happen the way they normally do. But um, given a little bit of time, there are some creative suggestions that can make an unusual and unique fun event, you know, on the Fourth of July, say for instance, I'm sure that maybe we couldn't have music uh, in a concert form, but we might be able to have music in the back of a pickup truck going through neighborhoods, that sort of thing. So, you know, I would suggest that we mine, um, you know, our creative thinking and maybe look at some of the ideas that are being done all over the world that are kind of unusual. And if we can't have our traditional activities, maybe we can have something that still lifts the community spirit a bit. So, uh, you know, I, I just think there's opportunities here.
Yeah, and we're looking at all those. And I think, you know, some of the things that we're um, kind of talking to our neighbor um, communities too, to see kind of what they're doing. We're looking at, you know, different ways to do a parade through the neighborhoods, like you were saying with music. You know, doing something that doesn't, you know, have people come together in a large group, but to be able to celebrate with their neighborhoods in, in their own way.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, thanks, Allison, for working on that. And thanks for the recommendations, Dana. Um, we'll move on to council committee reports if there's nothing else there. Um, planning and zoning, uh, Jane.
Uh, no, we're having our first meeting this Thursday. Or, yeah, this Thursday.
Okay. Uh, admin committee, Kathy?
Uh, yes, um, thank you. I, I do have a report, a few things to say. We, I think we had the first virtual committee meeting. Um, so thank you for IT on that. It worked, it worked pretty well. I like this. It'd be much nicer to be in a room, but it worked very well. So, um, if I could please, I would wanted to share a little bit about um, that particular meeting. We had two agenda items on the administrative committee and one and the bulk of the conversation about the city's health and benefits plan. And then we spent a bit of time talking about an update on the Dublin twenty thirty-five framework. So let me share a little bit, if I could please, about the health benefits conversation. Jennifer Miglietti, who's the Human Resource Director, and Matt Stifler, who's the interim Finance Director, led a discussion about the city's health benefits um, and cost. Um, we spent a bit of time going over a brief history and the current design of the healthcare program. And they guided us through a discussion of the current state of the programs, some current cost structures. Many of the cost-saving programs that the city has very successfully implemented over the last year. And then we spent some time talking about the twenty twenty budget and updated forecast. Um, we all know how important the health benefits program is to the employee program. Um, and so, as you recall, council asked the administrative committee to work um, with staff because the costs of healthcare, not unlike other organizations and other municipalities, um, have been rising. And so are there opportunities to, to look at that? So our meeting on um, my, last Wednesday was really the first of two scheduled meetings. So that committee is going to meet again on the fourth, and we're going to continue those conversations at which time we'll bring back action items to you. But I did want to make just three points from that discussion and then see if my fellow committee members wanted to add in. The first, and I think an important um, one, was a bit of a cost update. Um, as you recall, one of the reasons for this discussion that during our twenty twenty annual operating um, budget discussions, we were talking about this significant anticipated growth in the budget for healthcare in twenty twenty. Um, that twenty twenty budget as it currently exists is approximately nine million. And that was representing a cost increase of about sixteen percent over the two thousand and nineteen budget. Um, we have some good news to share here, and that while the costs are still projected to um, increased due to the hard work of our staff and some of these cost containment um, and mitigation discussions that I mentioned earlier, staff presented last week a revised healthcare budget, which is markedly lower. And we're now expecting um, that budget to only increase about six point six percent over the nineteen. So instead of the sixteen percent, we're expecting six point six. Now that's still certainly an increase and we still need to look at that, but that's good news. And I do think in light of the discussions we had earlier, does give us some breathing room and, and some, on some opportunities to discuss it. So that was good news. I wanted to share that. The second point um, that came out was that really the one cost area that really stands out that has caused the um, greatest increase over the last few years was the stop-loss costs for ourself. Um, um, the insured program. And that we're going to spend some time talking about that. That's going to be, I think, a bulk of the conversation. We're going to have our meeting next week. And then finally, um, certainly um, at what we're experiencing now and some of the very innovative things that are going on in the healthcare program, we could take telehealth as an example. We know that some of this stuff is going to have implications moving forward. And so it's actually a very timely thing to be able to, to see what we're going through and, and look at the health program in that regard. And because we have some time, that, that's quite a helpful thing. So I just wanted to share a few of those, those points. There's a full slide deck on the first part of that conversation in Board Pack. Um, and as promised, the thinking was we'll get through the second level, the second meeting next week, discuss these matters more and then bring back to the full council some more um, information and then some potential recommendations. So, um, Jane or Christina, anything to add on that item?
Nope. I think you did a great job summarizing. It'll be a good discussion moving forward, for sure.
Great. And so we'll, we'll plan to bring that back, but um, the good news is that, that the team is already working very, very hard on reducing some of those costs and some of those um, results of our, our bearing fruit. So that's really good news. The second item that we talked about at this, um, as we briefly did an update, and as you recall at our twenty twenty retreat, one of the things that came out as an action item was really the creation of what we were calling or what we are calling the Dublin twenty thirty-five framework. And that is really to do some long-term uh, planning. Um, specifically to look at things like infrastructure and land use and economics and quality of life and what that might look like in twenty thirty-five. Um, given the scope of that work, one of the discussions we had at the committee is how would we begin to get our arms around that? And how could we begin to do some of that work collectively together? And one of the discussions along with the conversations that we've had with Dana and staff is potentially take this um, very large topic um, and to break it into some groups. Maybe groups along those four lines that I mentioned earlier of, of maybe infrastructure, land use, economics and quality of life and get some working groups. Now, because of the strategic importance of this, I think it was clear at the um, retreat that council wants to have some level of involvement in this. So um, one of the thoughts was to create these working groups and have council liaison to each of those working groups that could attend to discuss, to talk about um, high-level objectives, strategy, et cetera, so forth. The other thing, of course, that's going on is um, it's time, as we've talked before, to have really our Dublin Community Plan update. And those things, of course, must dovetail. So we talked about the importance of, as we're in these working groups, to think about that. Certainly don't want to double down on that work and we certainly wouldn't have the staff time. So what I'm sort of bringing to the uh, conversation tonight to counsel is would it make sense as we begin to do this work and, and, and do some focus on the future as we're um, living through our today reality, um, that we create some working groups? So see what, I'll pause there and see what people think about that.
Well, it sounds like we will look forward to the recommendations out of the committee.
Well, I'll mention that um, I, I do think that we have to kind of take it bite-sized. And I like the idea that we discussed that, that you segmented in the way that we did at the retreat into sort of these categories. But it does have to come hand in hand with the, with a relook at the community plan. But I think in particular, now's a great time to begin to look at this because we're going through such an unusual uh, a unique kind of um, lifestyle right now. And it's making us think about the future about how we can position Dublin to be um, ready for any kind of um, challenge or opportunity that presents itself. And all I could think about was our pilot program of bringing the internet to every home and how that would have positioned us if we were one of the cities in the central Ohio area or in the state of Ohio that actually had, had high-speed internet to every resident and every citizen. So um, so, you know, I like the idea of, of taking this in, in four separate segments and then uh, doing that hand in hand with the community plan upgrade.
Great. Anything else, Kathy? Or anything else, uh, anyone else want to chime in on that? No?
Okay, so then um, if that's, if there seems to be general acceptance to that approach, what I'll, I'll do is I'll reach out to each of you and, and see what areas of interest that, that you have. We'll bring that back to the committee and um, we'll go from there. How's that sound?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, uh, finance committee, Christina.
Uh, nothing this time. We have our scheduled meeting come up, or like next week.
Great. Uh, public services, Jane?
Our meeting is uh, next week as well, on Monday, May fourth.
Great, um. Coda, Kathy?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, friendship association, Christina and Andy?
No, at this point, we've sort of um, put that on hold. And there may be a little bit of some retooling that we might want to bring back uh, before council. Um, we're working with staff on that, so more to come.
Uh, I will do an update on the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. Um, that organization has been uh, very involved with the legislate, legislative issues and um, there's been uh, there are draft letters that came out today. Is that correct, Dana? Um, of letters that will go to the legislature on the behalf of um, all of the um, all of the members of MORPC, um, particularly around funding of, around covering costs and recovery transportation, as you can imagine. So um, you should see those come out in an email in short order, I think, as soon as they're finalized. I'm sure Dana will be forwarding that to everybody. Um, okay, uh, next is uh, Logan Union Champagne Regional Planning, Andy?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, US thirty-three corridor, Kathy and Jane?
Nothing. Thank you.
Head shakes there. Okay. Arts Council, John, welcome back.
Well, thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Absolutely.
Oh, great, great, great. Hey, uh, as you know, uh, Sunday at the Scioto concerts have been canceled. And uh, we're going to have to stay tuned because uh, as we discussed already tonight, there's going to be further discussing, discussion on the uh, on the budget for the Arts Council. But right now, we hate to lose it, but uh, you know, it was a wonderful uh, series of events, but Sunday it says has been canceled.
Great. I think that'll be one of the results of all of this is we'll appreciate all of the things that we took for granted. Um, not having access to and then having them back is hopefully going to bring a lot of comfort and joy to people. Uh, Board of Education, Greg?
Nothing to report.
Okay, uh, Washington Township, Jane?
No, nothing to report.
Okay. And Dublin Bridges, Jane?
They've just been very busy and doing some great things.
Yes, I've been getting their emails. They are certainly quite busy. Okay, uh, Veterans Committee, John, I, you may have missed some of what Dana was saying about uh, Veterans Day. But, I'm sorry, Memorial Day, we were talking about Memorial Day. Anything else on Veterans Committee?
No, all I know is that uh, and Dana may have already mentioned this while I was absent there, but uh, the lunch, of course, is canceled. They are still thinking of having some kind of program. Uh, including the Navy uh, dropping of the wreath in, in the water and a, and a service at the cemetery. Looks like it's going to be it for this year.
Thank you. Yeah, he did cover some of those things while you, we lost your connection momentarily.
Thank you.
Uh, Complete Count Committee, Christina?
Yes, we continue to meet. We, we met Yes, we continue to meet. We we met virtually, um which went, okay. Homer's been doing a brilliant job at making sure that um information is reaching the committee. I kind of gave Jane a call and asked to enlist her help in her ward. Um that sort of uh southeastern portion of Dublin has the lowest response rate right now. In in the city, so we're we're working actually several different angles on that, including. Putting uh flyers with boxes that are being delivered from the food pantry. Um reaching out to some of our uh folks that are being spoken to on a regular basis in our. Um older community and Jane being fabulous that she is and reaching out to all the folks that she knows. And her ward to spread the word that um COVID or no COVID, um getting everyone counted is is critically important. And really, there's a lot of good reasons for that and one of them is COVID related. Uh dollars for um medical facilities and medical personnel are also distributed through. Um the outcome of the census, so it's critically important that we get people to respond to the census. So we're really trying to work very hard. Um I I can't say enough about Mark Boyd and um and Homer's help. In working with us and the the members of the committee to try to get the word out. Um and a special thank you to Jane for for helping us out. She didn't have to do that and I really appreciate it.
Thanks, I did see the East Dublin Civic Association put out a.
Oh, yeah.
Something about the um. Well, link to the census um online forum, so. Hopefully we'll see those numbers rise, so thank you for your efforts on that. Okay, um that will bring us to Council Roundtable. And I'm just going to go across my screen and I'm going to start with Jane.
Um, well, uh you know, I I a couple of things. Um I've been talking a little bit to Scott Drang and we've been thinking. I know he's been working so hard on the on the recovery piece. Um I just wanted to ask Council's opinion on something. We had talked a while back about the open container. Ordinance where you can have an open container like Hilliard does and some of the other. Some of the other municipalities do on a regular basis, but I wondered. And I know that when we talked about this, I wasn't partic- I wasn't particularly crazy about the idea because I thought I felt that. Uh the Historic District in Bridge Park with the opening of the bridge and all the new restaurants. Had plenty of opportunity to have alcohol on the patios and that sort of thing. But I wondered uh what you might think about the possibility of the summer as restaurants begin to open up and have half of their. Their area to serve food, whether or not this might be a temporary opportunity. To allow in the Bridge Street area or whatever area that is legally allowed. To maybe have um open container in the evenings and on the weekends so that people could. Buy something, carry it out from the restaurant. We could and restaurants may have outside tables and people could actually eat and have their alcoholic beverage. With their meal during this time when we're trying to boost revenues for the restaurants. Um it's just a thought. Not a recommendation, just a food for thought, I guess, as an opportunity for the summer.
Maybe Dana and Jennifer Redler could um take a look at what that might look like and. And benchmark that with some other communities, but you know, as the opportunity presents, we're not going to be in a big hurry, I don't think, because I think we're going to be.
No, I agree, no.
I'm away from that, but um.
It's just food for thought.
Yeah, you know, uh Marysville has been doing that on specific nights and uh over the summer and I just think it's a great. Idea really to get people down there and we'll probably still have to do um segregated dining or something or separation. But I still think it's, I think it's a good idea, something to consider to sort of fire up uh both of those areas.
I could see, if you don't mind, I could I could see a balance between providing additional seating capacity. Outside of the restaurants into the street perhaps, perhaps kind of like a plots, you might see somewhere. Versus it being a an attraction piece to draw a large crowd.
Right.
Who I think we would have to look at it in that context um and see if there's not a way to to maybe help the restaurants. Even in historic Dublin somehow and other.
Yeah, you know, I think that, you know, when these restaurants are struggling, I think of a restaurant. Uh that's not even in the Historic District that might have some outdoor seating area. That we might be able to give conditional use. For a temporary time that they can serve outside and expand the area that they can serve food and drink. And then then when they're allowed to come back in, that is lifted and it's not, that conditional use doesn't exist any longer. I'm just wondering how we can help these restaurants make it until they can be fully. Uh staffed and and have folks inside again.
Well, Jenny Roush isn't with us this evening, I'm sure Dana can get with planning or somebody there and uh work with Jennifer Redler on the legal end and and. And see and bring back to us what our options might be. Anything else, Jane? Nope, okay, thank you. Uh my next up is Christina, so.
I I'm I'm good, Chris Knight.
Okay, thank you. Next would be Andy.
I have two things, one to piggyback on the Scott Drang conversation and this restart plan. I'm wondering. Chris, you're you have a role on this economic task force at the state level. This restart plan that that Scott has put together has certain timelines and I'm wondering. What kind of. Influence that we have in moving the ball. In terms of a specific timeline. You know, the governor spoke today and indicated what businesses can reopen and and at what time periods. Um but in terms of hospitality and restaurants, they're kind of left hanging. Um I guess I'm curious, I'm starting to hear from residents that are wanting. To exert some control and I've told them to contact the governor. Um but locally, what kind of control can we have in terms of at least making. Our voices heard and help uh Scott in his efforts and some of our local businesses.
So I I mean, that's a great question. I I don't know that um. You know, the Ohio Department of Health is going to make the determination. Um you know, we certainly. I I think they're hearing from a lot of people, uh you know, the. The anticipation of life getting back to normal and I'm sure they're trying to balance that anticipation and that pent up demand and all of that with. With the health risks that there, you know, the health conditions that they're trying to achieve, so. Yeah, I don't really, I I can't answer that, I. I I don't know that we have the level of expertise other than uh the economic end of it to really make much of a comment. Um we certainly don't want to be Dublin the place where people got sick. Um but we do want to be Dublin the place that's innovative and out front and is, you know, particularly. Involved in the economic recovery, so you you bring up a great point. Uh we'd have to give that a lot of thought in consideration.
I guess I'm wondering where the timelines came from in Scott's uh restart plan. He's got some fairly specific timelines and not, he doesn't have dates. But he has timelines to do certain things and I'm wondering. What what influenced that? Maybe we don't have the answer to that question and maybe I reach out to Scott and and have that conversation with him.
Dana may know, there was some Johns Hopkins kind of information that came out, but I Dana may know more about that.
I I don't really know more about that. What I would, one of the reasons I was recommending that. His proposal go to Finance Committee was for that very reason, so you could spend a little bit more time. Understanding his plan and and how he came up with it and how he might roll that out and then we can get some of those. Kind that kind of information boiled up and we can bring that back to council as a whole and. And he he may want to present both at committee and at council. Uh we'd certainly want to welcome him and have him the opportunity to speak at both of those, so.
Okay, and then the second item is just a follow up on this. Uh someone's cutting trees down in the Red Tribune Park. Uh is there any update on that?
Well, I was going to send something out to you, but I had a follow up question to staff. They they uh got back to me today on that and it was just that. A resident was actually clearing some of the um invasive species in the area. Which is okay, we like that, but I needed a little bit more information in order to respond thoroughly with that, so you'll. I'll get something to you tomorrow and that I needed to follow up.
Very good, thank you.
I think it's well intended, but on whose property and things like that, we got to still sort out.
Great, John?
Yeah, the only um uh before my sound, uh I had trouble with my sound. I just want one comment on the chicken thing and I think it's gone for further study, but. There are mobile cages and uh there's sort of a new technology in that which makes it really not a nuisance. So I think whoever's going to end up with that should start looking into this because. It's something I think are, you know, we'd love people to have this opportunity without the mess and without. Drawing pests like rats or mice and there's and there's ways to do it now and. I think uh we just have to look into that, because I I we've actually, I've actually seen these in use and. It's pretty neat, these people are able to have chickens, have eggs, have their kids raise little farm animals in their backyard. Sort of a neat thing really for those folks. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you so much, John. Uh Greg?
Uh just two two quick thoughts that I would like to share. One, the first one is a thank you to our city staff and. Starting with Dana, all the way, all the way down the chain of command, you know, it. It it never ceases to amaze me the challenges that are thrown in front of our staff on a on a daily basis, some of them are more routine. Some of them are unusual, some of them are bigger than others, and now we've had one that is um extraordinary, uh beyond anything we've ever known. Or probably hopefully ever will know again and they absorb it and they respond to it and they. Uh do it in a way that seems as though they don't even break a sweat when they do it and and there is no roadmap for dealing with this. Um this situation, you you're we're an uncharted tart territory and they do it, uh Dana from you down. Uh in a way that this community should be extremely grateful. Uh and proud of the job that you've done because it it you talk about the the continuity of government, well, it is, it goes deeper than that. It's the continuity of our of our whole society and our community. Um and I'm really proud of our community that's responded the way that it has. Um and 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 you know, all the social distancing and all the things that need to be done to protect us and that's not easy. And staff has done this with um extraordinary professionalism and grace and the second um comment of appreciation goes to you. Chris, and you know, that is a um challenging chair that you are sitting in. Uh and it is exceptionally challenging under these circumstances and for for at least for me personally, my. Um the time and effort that I put into this position has gone down dramatically now that we're, you know, on video and everything else is just so. Kind of re- constricted and it's it's gotten smaller and tighter. Uh but I know for you, it has done the exact opposite and the amount of calls that you have to be on and the meetings and the. The different organizations that we are involved in that really look to Dublin for leadership. In most ordinary, common, everyday situations and in this one, um they certainly are looking to double for leadership and I know. Uh that that takes a tremendous amount of time and energy and emotional capital. That you have got to invest in having these conversations again and again and again. Uh under a number of, in a number of different forums for a number of different reasons, you know, we're in the. Central Ohio Mayors and Managers Association, we're in the state of Ohio, the managers or the or the big cities and all of that stuff and it is. It's a lot to address, um and you have done it with great class and so I I appreciate what you're doing representing our community and. That is all I have to say about that.
Well, thank you, you're very kind. I got to sit next to a really, really great guy that did it really well for a number of years, so. I uh I consider myself fortunate to have had that time. Um, okay, uh and and I know Dana, thanks you on behalf of the staff, they are doing a phenomenal job, so. Um Kathy?
Yeah, I I couldn't echo those sentiments more, so thank you very much to all of the staff. I mean, look at the. Presentation that Matt put together for this evening, I mean. That's Omen's work, Matt, in in a short period of time and even though, to your point. We really don't have answers on some of this, you've worked really hard to put those in frameworks for us so that at least we have some frames around what that. What that could potentially look like and and we appreciate that very much. Um and to Chief and everybody who's out there just getting it done every day, so thank you all very, very much for that. I also would uh like to say quick thanks to the residents. I I will tell you. Um if you're feeling bad, just go for a walk outside and you'll see somebody will smile at you and how you're doing, we're doing great, how are you doing? We're doing great and and that continual encouragement is just really such. It it just makes you feel good about where you live, it really truly does and um I want to say thanks to the folks. I've had the opportunity to cross our gorgeous new bridge a couple times over the last couple of weeks. And I appreciate everybody wearing the masks and doing the distance and yet still still loving what makes Dublin Dublin, so. Um thanks to all the residents and and I appreciate that and I know everybody else does as well. So I just have one final comment. It is the most crazy thing, but we have two members of council who have turned thirty five. In this last sort of week timeframe, I don't know that happens. Greg had a happy thirty fifth on Saturday, so happy thirty five to you again, Greg. And Jane, tomorrow is her thirty fifth birthday, so we want to um. Uh say happy birthday to our colleagues and and hope you had and I hope you have uh wonderful days and we appreciate you, so happy birthday.
Shall we sing?
Oh, probably not.
We'll just uh we'll just be grateful that um that the Finance Committee isn't reviewing the numbers that Kathy just. We'll keep those to ourselves. Um you know, I don't have a whole lot more to add to that other than I would say, you know, it is a really hard time and people are struggling. For a lot of different reasons. Some people are struggling at the the, what they think of that is the choking of their. Of their freedoms and and other people of of wanting fewer and fewer freedoms that would make them feel safer and safer and. Um you know, uh it is just a, it's a really hard place to be and our community is. Living in that space with grace and um with compassion and uh you know, it. And none of us know the answer and and that part is okay, I I suppose, because it's what's available to us, but. You know, I just want to encourage us to keep um trying our best to be compassionate towards one another is. And to try to seek to understand more than to be understood. Um and to really continue, uh we're in this together and um that kind of attitude is is really displayed. I can tell you on Saturday, Dublin, if you if you'd had had a uh drone or something from the air, it would have looked like an anthill. There were just people everywhere, it was a glorious day and if there's anything that I want to take from COVID nineteen is. The only thing I think maybe I want to take is that people are spending time with the people that they love. And that they're having an opportunity to explore their their community. So for that, I am grateful, for the rest of it, it's really tough. Um but we're in it together and uh this too shall pass, so with that, I believe we are adjourned and uh safe travels to everyone.
Thank you.